Hey, can we turn those lights down a little bit? How do we turn those lights down?
I've got something tomorrow morning at ten, but yeah, I definitely wanna be at the most I can be at.
Well, this is gonna be very.
I mean, these babies are blazing.
Well, when I went on the trip last week with Russ and Marty, we went to the.
I'm telling you, I mean, it's putting out heat. Come on down.
Let's have conversations and let's just look at all possible.
No, down.
What might happen.
There you go.
Yeah, normally they don't want.
Cause where we. We don't. We need to allow them to be included and make it work if they want to be.
Thank you.
Are we all turned on? Yep. Everybody's ready? Is Mr. Burdette making it for the workshop?
No, he told me he was gonna rest as long as he could, cause he wanted to make the full commissioner meeting.
Okay.
And I told him we didn't have a speaker, but he's trying to get that at the next time we had this, so he said he'd probably see us at five.
Sounds good. Alrighty, um. I'm gonna call to order the workshop this May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three at four o'clock of the Board of Commissioners. We'll dispense with roll calls since there's no specific action gonna be taken that's not on the agenda. Anyway, we'll do that for voting purpose for the regular meeting at five o'clock. So this work session is to discuss the county's operations, zoning, growth and development, and some workforce housing. And I think what we've got is, Tim, you've got a PowerPoint that Clint Mueller from ACCG has provided to us. So we don't have anything really greatly organized for those who are here for that tonight. We just had an opportunity to get this PowerPoint. We are trying to get Clint Mueller, who is, or Todd, perhaps, was Todd's last name?
God, I can't remember.
Anyway, it skips my mind too, but they're both legal support for ACCG, County Association of County Commissioners. And they have a lot of information on this. We're trying to get them to come to have another presentation down the road. We've got a little bit of time, so we'll have many discussions on workforce housing. What does it look like? What's it like for Effingham?
Todd Edwards. That one's gonna drive me nuts.
Todd Edwards.
Yeah.
And so, you know, where would it be? Who would it be addressing? Those are discussions that we're gonna start tonight. And once again, we're every, for those who didn't know, every other meeting, we're having this workshop at four o'clock. So you can put it on your calendar if you wanna join it. And it's all to help us address growth, future, and stay ahead of things versus just having occasional workshops or retreats. We're gonna try to stay every other meeting. So it gets a chance for us to have input from our constituents and for us to discuss an open session as well. So, Tim, I don't wanna take too much time, but do you wanna help you and Commissioner Deloach lead us maybe in some conversation about workforce housing?
Sure. And I don't know if you want, I mean, the, the presentation is not very, is not very long. But, you know, it brings up, you know, just really the bullet points on, on the housing issue that we're having. And, and it's not, I mean, it's availability and it's affordability, you know, that. And Steve actually got me some, some stats, and I thought they were, you know, pretty fascinating, that the average median income for a household in Effingham County is seventy-two thousand dollars. And your median house price now is three hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred. And that's household income, that's not individual income. But, so, those numbers are, are obviously substantially different than they were just maybe pre-COVID. And so, while we've been growing our housing stock in the county, it's been, it's, it's having a hard time to keep up with, with the amount of growth that needs to be here, which is what's driving up, driving up the cost. And then as your single-family houses become, some people get priced out of the market. You know, folks who are just starting at some of these careers who pay a decent amount of money, don't, don't have a tremendous amount of options when it comes to starter housing or rental housing, I'm sorry. So, the.
Tim, what was the, this was the mean or the medium income?
The median income, household income, is seventy-two thousand two seventy-nine.
Census.
What?
Well, the census.
Yeah, and so that, that, that's three years old?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So it's much more than that. That's from, that's from twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty, okay.
But, yeah, so.
The house cost?
It's staying the same. They're not changing.
Okay.
And the house cost is what?
Three forty-eight eight.
This is a technical thing, but if you could check and see if that's the medium or the mean?
No, median, median.
Okay. Cause there's a difference. That medium means high, low, this is the middle.
Right.
Mean means where most houses fall.
Right.
And I mean, most houses may fall higher or lower if you.
Correct.
And so, medium may not necessarily be the number we need to look at, but the mean, where do we have the most houses? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So we might wanna look at that to see.
They're about three twenty to three fifty. If you look on any of the realtor-type websites, the availability, they're all high.
Yeah, they, they are. I'd just be interested to know if, if we have more houses at a, say, two eighty or, or is it four hundred, but the median just happens to be there? I don't know.
So, you know, what we really wanted to get out of this is, you know, certainly on the staff side, is just, you know, as we approach applications, and applications are coming in, more, I would say almost more than not, or maybe fifty-fifty at this point, on multifamily versus single-family detached. And it's predominantly townhomes, you all know that. But, we do have some folks who are just kind of asking about some apartments, but no applications have come in yet. So, just a, you know, as a matter of preference, as to where we need to position them, where, you know, if there's, you know, certain things that we need to address in the zoning text as it comes to multifamily R-three housing, we're, you know, we'd be, we'd be happy to address that as well. But, you know, let's, if we, you know, kinda at least start the conversation here, we can, we can try and figure out which direction, or what sort of data we need to provide y'all.
We've had that conversation, well, we had the conversation yesterday, you know, predominantly now there's a lot of interests in townhomes. I think we need to, to look at percentages. I mean, we don't wanna get to where we have nothing but developers coming here wanting townhomes, you know, maybe thirty, seventy split of townhome versus single-family. And I don't know that we can control that either. But, you know, I've harped and harped about, I don't want this to turn into Pooler, but I think there is a, there is a demand and a need for townhomes because in conversation with even just Yancey Ford, a beginning school teacher can't, can't afford to buy a house in this county now. They're having to rent, can't even find a place to rent. They're having to go to Fort Wentworth or Pooher to find a place to rent to work up here in this county. But where's our permits now? Well, how many, how many permits are we issuing a year? We graduate eight hundred and fifty students a year. We're not building homes, we're not, we, there's not enough homes being built to support our children coming out of school at this point. Much less the influx of people coming in from around the country.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, the eggs and issues the other day, we, it's, it's not just workforce housing.
Right.
Cause, cause workforce housing, we need to define what do we look for in workforce housing, because Say One is probably gonna have a.
I know ECHS alone is graduating over four hundred kids this year.
Well, Yancey told me he's at between eight and eight fifty.
Yeah.
So I know between the two high schools, we're not.
Between the two, yeah.
Well, between the, the cities and the county, we probably have that many permits per year, between the city and.
Okay.
Cause we have like six to seven hundred in the county, unincorporated area. But still, how about the people who are moving in?
Yeah.
And so forth. So, to me, there's things, and I'll let you share with Steve, is, what are we talking about workforce housing? Because we're talking about for Say One and the industries that are coming, these guys will be making, the base salary's gonna be probably seventy-five thousand plus. And then the average salary's gonna be well over six figures. So, I don't think you're talking about low-income housing for that type of constituent that would move here. So we've gotta be careful not to overbuild affordable housing. But we do need to look at the bigger picture as we move, people move in and our kids graduate. They can't afford a three hundred and fifty, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar house. Do they have a townhome they could move into for three or four years while they're establishing their income without overtaxing, where they don't have to leave and go to Savannah or Bryan or Bullock and work here? So those are the two things I see we gotta address.
So, the answer to the question about permits, so as of the end of April, we've had three hundred and ninety-nine single-family home permits. Now, those are, the prices are all over the place, and your month of March, you had ninety-four. And I think Blue Jay came in, that development, and they got seventy at a time, I think is what happened there. Which was, so that skewed the numbers a little bit. So, you're right, we, we need a definition. There are definitions all over the country for these, but I would like to have some kind of definition of where to start. And that would be very helpful for us too, if we could talk about that, or we can just shoot something to you and y'all can figure out that's what you wanna do. So we've only had one permit for apartments, that was four hundred and eight, that was approved back May of two thousand twenty-two. And then we've had ten townhome permits since the first of the month, more, or first of the year, more or less. Now, we know we got some coming, some are gonna be approved, some, I think, are gonna be in B-threes that were already approved. So those are gonna, those are gonna happen. My first house was a townhome, that's how I started, and then built up the equity after that, so that's really what, what could happen. And of course, he gave you the numbers about that. So one thing, from a planning standpoint, that I think that we need to accomplish here, we've worked on the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, but we've never done a housing study in the county that I'm aware of. And I think that's something that we probably could do. And we, we, you know, there's some grant money out there to do that, if we could get that. But a housing study took, look at stock, look at what we need, look at the, the.
So that would kinda answer what Forrest was talking about.
It will. It will tell you a lot. It really, really will.
And, and if I could add to that, and Brant could bring this up as well, I don't, I don't know if there's consensus amongst the group, but the, the economic developer folks, and I don't know where it originated from, but there was a kind of a, a request to see if we can do a four-county study on, on housing. And I don't know whether that's, you know, where you do four individual studies and then combine them. You know, I really, it depends on, on who you hire on that. But, you know, any housing study, I would think, would have to, we'd have to look regionally at, at Chatham, Bryan, Effingham, and Bullock, and maybe Liberty. You know, to, you know, just determine, you know, where, you know, cause certain housings, you know, the, the farther you get from your work centers, you know, generally the more affordable it gets sometimes. And so, that's why looking at, looking at it regionally kind of can make more sense than, you know, just taking a snapshot of an individual county. Because, you know, I mean, in some, you know, each county can offer what everybody's looking for, so.
And it might be wise to, following Steve's thoughts there, to have our own study for our county, but have that available and encouraged through the JDA, Brant, to do a, a four or five-county review, but then we have where we think our needs are. And they can use that detail. That also protects us to make sure we're well-represented in that study. And it protects us to know how to evaluate what the regional study says. Do you wanna make some?
So, yeah, the, a group approached the JDA about doing a joint study, and I think it's like two hundred thousand dollars. And the question came up, okay, if it's fifty thousand dollars per county, then it'd be up to you guys to go to the cities if to financially participate or carry that cost, however each county wanted to handle it. And so, it, that's kind of as far as we've gotten. It was brought up to, I think, the county managers when we were out at the, at the Metas, Metaplan site a couple of weeks ago, but I think the general consensus, what I'm hearing is, everybody was just looking to do their own study. But if you think about us in Bryan County being in the middle, I think there's more reasons for us to do a study than say, Chatham and Bullock on the bookends. But, so that's, that's out there. Going back to Say One, you know, the fact that it's on, it's located on Old Augusta Road, the hope and, or the way we kind of sold this is that a lot of the workforce hopefully is already here in the county and will not be driving to Chatham. They'll be stopping and working at Say One, which is a great thing when you think about I-sixteen, which is a great piece of property. But had they located down there, only, in my opinion, twenty-five percent of workforce would've come from Effingham, they would've come from all the other counties. So I think there's a workforce that can be captured for, for Say One, here, who's already here. And then the last thing I've mentioned real quick is, you know, Omni Trax Bro has a hundred and sixty acres, has already zoned PD or PUD. And they've been talking, I know you and I met with Roger, and, you know, they've been talking about workforce housing, affordable housing for quite some time, so. And I know they wanna come back in and, and talk to the county again, so that's, that's, property's already zoned for, for residential. And to me, it kinda makes sense where you, you know, buffering Hodgeville Road and, and you have industry back behind, I mean, that keeps, that keeps warehouses off of Hodgeville Road. So, you know, that was, that was zoned, from what I understand, a request of the county way back when during the condemnation. And there was some discussion at one point about them wanting to rezone it back to industrial about three or four years ago, but now they, they pivoted. And, but this workforce housing or affordable housing seems to be a very important topic in Denver. And so I think they'll be coming back and, you know, what that density looks like, what that could look like with some commercial up front and residential in the back, you know, that may be a good way to, you know, you won't have to worry about looking at new property to try to rezone and things of that nature, so that may be step one, just something to think about.
Yeah. You know, the big vision I see here on that, and as a matter of fact, I met with Alan briefly, zipper, after the transportation meeting. And part of that probably butts up to his thing, he said when they build the workforce housing or the logo, he says, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give the people your numbers so they can call y'all to complain about the noise. Gets me input from the commission here on this. I said, well, Alan, I'm not as concerned about the people who buy, build and buy with the knowledge that industry is there. So I, first one, I'd kinda agree that that's a good place if you're gonna put multifamily housing, because there is no residential behind there they're butting up against. And people who buy or rent there are buying with knowledge. Now, there may be some things we could do to buffer it with burns and all. But I said, he kinda agreed, I said, but I'm not as concerned about protecting people who are buying with knowledge. I'm more interested in protecting the residents who have subdivisions where multifamily suddenly is put up against them. And they built and bought without knowledge of what was coming.
Right.
But somebody who buys a house next to a concrete plant, they can call me all they want.
Right.
It was there when you bought it and you knew it was there. And so, I guess I'm saying, see, I wanna get Charles' opinion. To me, that may be a good area, because you're not butting up against residential on that side, particularly if you put a PD, some commercial out front to get a buffer from the residents across the street, then you get some townhouses that are affordable. And I'm gonna use the word affordable versus workforce housing, cause I'm not sure workforce housing is what we really need. I'm like, yeah, I think we've got some housing for that and people who could take those jobs. And if we build workforce housing, ours might be a little higher end.
Yeah.
Because of what industry that you're bringing to us.
Yeah.
Makes sense? So I like that. Tim and I talked, and I'm not talking a lot, I'm just gonna lay some lessons out there and then get your responses. Tim and I talked about this week, I think you came in part of our conversation, that maybe we should look at, and we're gonna give y'all. Tim and I talked about, uh, this week, I think you came in part of our conversation, that maybe we should look at, and we're gonna give y'all a chance to share with us a little bit too. But maybe we should look at the R three multifamily townhouses. That, that should really be except for areas we define, like maybe on Hodgeville up against industrial property. Let's pick those two or three areas. This is where we can have nothing but multifamily with some commercial front. And we're okay if you wanna put two or three hundred homes in there, because we're fixing to beef up Hodgeville, we're gonna have the Parkway, we're gonna have a way to move that traffic. But if you're gonna be on a, another area in the county, let's limit it maybe to R five. And take our R five and put a conditional percentage of townhomes when it's done right. You know, so that you don't get next to a residential section, four or five hundred townhomes or apartments. And then also, that's two things you could do, and then we could push multifamily toward the cities, toward the urban areas. Cause they're, that's usually where they would sit anyway. We've had those kind of discussions before. But that's my vision and my thought of how we might wanna move as a board, but I'll lay that out there and get some feedback. Does that make sense? What's your thoughts?
The, the only other thing I was gonna mention, yeah, the, the piece right there in front of Alan, that's not zone PD yet. So that would be something that they would be looking to rezone. And I think it's only like forty acres and you have some wetlands and things of that nature. So I, I think they've been approached by, you know, kinda like Leo, a sanctuary, that's been very successful down on Old Augusta Road. With that product work, that's something the county would, would support. And then I think they've been approached by another developer who, uh, has, if you, if you go down President Street, those two apartment complexes. I think they're called the Mariners or something right down there, and it backs up to industrial, back up to Reed Delaney's, uh, all that heavy industrial. And it's been very successful too. So, you know, can, can residential, be it townhomes, apartments, whatever, uh, work well with industry? Yeah, I think it's been proven it can. And, um, and I think Leo Sanctuary is gonna be very successful. They is successful, but I don't think they're gonna be affected by those warehouses. I mean, you just get used to it. So I'm with you Wesley, I don't, I don't see that being a problem. On Hodgeville Road, especially on the hundred and sixty acres, cause it's, 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 there's ways to insulate that. I, I mean, I think that's gonna be a very natural, they could do all types of pri- price points there. Um, and so again, you know, with commercial upfront, I mean, I think that's a, a great piece of property to get started on some, some affordable housing.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'll also say the, um, uh, I mean, the, you know, the, the, the cities can actually, you know, benefit a little bit more. Ideally with density because of their commercial areas, uh, where, um, if you put kind of, if you. Uh, because rooftops that are generally more condensed around a town center, um, you know, will increase the viability. Of the, of their, our commercial area quickly rather than kinda scattershotting them, uh, apartment complexes throughout, uh, throughout the county. Uh, and so, uh, you know, downtown areas like Springfield and Guyton and, um, you know, even some areas in Rankin. Um, you know, really, uh, you know, as a general rule, uh, younger multifam- you know, in, in higher density multifamily. Uh, they wanna be, um, in close proximity, walking distance if they can, uh, to, uh, to commercial areas. So, um, so I think a lot of this is gonna have to, um, uh, be coordinated with the municipalities. Um, certainly when it comes to, uh, apartments, so.
Yeah, the main thing I wanted us to do is just start the conversations, because I hear workforce housing all the time. Heard it a lot during ACCG, uh, annual conference. I know Governor Kemp talks about it, uh, the Speaker Burns talks about it. And I feel like we've got a general concept of it, but I don't know, you know, the real details of it. I mean, it, it sounds good, but what does it really mean? If developer comes in here and says, well, I'm gonna do a workforce development housing, well, okay, great. What does that really mean? What are you gonna do? Yeah, I mean.
And, and I will say, I mean, there's, um, from someone who was, who worked for a, um, a national home builder for years, uh, I, I, while there is a lot of concentration around. Um, you know, restrictions that municipalities and counties and, and so on and so forth, you know, whether it's design standards, neighborhood standards and so on and so forth. Uh, uh, about how that affects housing affordability, um, it, that is, um, uh, pennies when compared to, uh, what the real problem is, and that's supply. Uh, and so, uh, the, you know, I think legislatively, they tend to concentrate, um, concentrate. On, um, uh, you know, those minor issues when really supply is the, uh, i- is the biggest factor. When it comes to, um, uh, housing prices at this point. You know, not necessarily, you know, how many parking spaces you require, uh, offsite parking, uh, design standards, um, uh, and those other items. Don't get me wrong, they, they do add to the cost, but it's not, uh, it's, uh, it's not material compared to, um, uh, compared to supply and demand.
And, and we do have to remember, I just, I think all the board knows this, um, everybody's not gonna make the seventy-two thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, I've, I've rented to some folks over the years that they're not all gonna work that, that, some people have gotta work at the McDonald's. You know, we gotta provide housing, wherever how much we may not want to, that is affordable. And we gotta, that's why a study would be good to know how much affordable housing we do. Because there's a lot of folks that are gonna be in that forty to fifty thousand dollar income that still need a, a good place to live. And we just have to be prepared to handle what that brings and do it as best we can. We can't just have all high end. Would you like to say something? I saw you back there.
Yeah, come on up. So I agree with Jamie about what workforce housing is, cause that's been talked about for years. I was on the GIC.
State your name, I know we know your book for the record.
Uh, Jimmy Rutland, President and CEO of Habitat for Humanity. I was on the GIC team for, um, Georgian Senate Community Housing Team for City of Rankin. And I got immersed in all of this stuff, and there's been terms floated around. The issue is, like Chairman Corbett was saying, everybody's focusing on these high-end players coming in. But who is gonna support those? You're talking about the people, the workforce you're talking about is the service workers, the low-end workers. And you can't keep pushing them out further because it's harder for them to get in. You'll end up with a situation like Hilton Head. I mean, we're ways from this, but if we're gonna plan ahead, let's plan ahead. Hilton Head's bussing people into work from two counties away. Smyrna, Georgia did a bunch of zoning stuff and wanted to go high-end. And they ended up not having any service workers that were living in their communities. So we need to mix it up. And I'm not, um, I think Jamie's like this too. I'm not in favor of building a large community of low-end. What everybody else would call low-end housing. We need to kinda mix it up, and I don't know how to do that. I mean, if I knew how to do that, I'd be making money everywhere. But, um, you've gotta mix it up. And, and the, and the people we're talking about are the people that have the least amount of resources. So what was said earlier, they do need to be more closer to the commercial areas. In larger metropolitan areas, and if you look at HUD, um, requirements, HUD. If you go for HUD money for some of this stuff for quote, low income housing, and low income in HUD's definition is eighty percent of area median income. And for this county, for last year and this year, for a family of four, that's something like seventy-two thousand dollars. So if you're looking at low income, they need to be closer because the further out you push them. The more it's gonna cost them to get to work, more time it's gonna cost them, and it's just kind of a trip. And then they'll end up trying to find someplace in the woods to work or something. So I, I don't have the answer. If I had the answer, I'd be doing something else. But, um, we're the, and we're the only builder in the county that's building a home. That those people can qualify for. And I understand the economics of it. I mean, the builders and developers wanna make money. Um, we just wanna provide, and we can only do that one at a time, but, um, there needs to be some kind of balance. There needs to be some encouragement to do that, some incentive to, to do that, as opposed to just building the two fifty and above houses. And so that's, and like I said, I don't know the answer. But there does need to be a mi- I agree, there needs to be a mix of, um, towns, stuff like that. But, and the issue we have here with rental is that you can rent a, somebody a house. At a payment that they can't afford to get a mortgage with. Because you can't issue a mortgage if they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on the house. But you, but if that's eighty, if that's eight hundred dollars, you can still turn around and rent a house to that person for twelve hundred dollars. Cause nobody's stopping you. And then they get all upside down. So that's why we're in the hand-up. Business that we're in to get those people into home. And currently, we can still put somebody in a house slightly under a hundred, under two hundred thousand dollars. For eight hundred dollars a month. But that's our model, so we're using volunteer labor, so we're saving a whole lot of costs. But, I don't know what to say other than that. There are communities, and there were some very old communities that had, um, but there were larger planned communities. That had the stages of apartments, townhomes, single-family homes, zero, uh, single, zero lot line. And spread out like Columbia, Maryland was, I think, one of the first ones. And then Athens did a project, um, probably about ten years ago that was like that, where they, the development was staged. So that you had to compact and then went on out. So that's the only, if you can find out. I mean, you're probably familiar with some of those type of areas, but that's the only way I, that I would think to do it. But I'm, I'm in favor of doing infield development, as they say. There's a lot of little lots scattered in the cities especially, that you can build smaller homes, um, that would accommodate. Quote starter families, two, three bedroom, bedroom homes, under twelve hundred square feet, and then go on out from there. And we have to encourage that. But right now, the cities have the highest square footage requirements, not the county. So it's kinda defeat, that's where you wanna put those type. And you can't even build a cottage home, a high-end cottage home. Less than that in some of these places, but I'm.
What's the square footage, like in Rankin?
Like in Rankin.
Do you want the square footage is for a house in Rankin?
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred's the minimum you can build.
Yeah. So people like coming from, um, an area up in the northeast where they're used to, to smaller cottage homes. Can't even find an older couple, say just coming in, can't find a home that size or can't build a home that size. Without going through all the, um, appeal process.
My first home, I, I got married was under twelve hundred square feet, but it had three bedrooms and a bath and a half, and it was something I could afford.
Yeah, and that's what we try to build. But we build to code unless we can get a variance. So we build to code in the cities. We built fourteen hundred square foot homes in Rankin, and we built twelve hundred square foot homes in Guyton now. Where we used to build eleven hundred square foot homes.
Yeah, that's good information. Thank you.
What, uh, how are we defining affordable? I mean, I think, you know, if we're gonna talk about that, you know, um. You know, just like Steve said, I started, when I moved out, I rented, rent apartment, and then I, I bought a town home till I was able to buy a standalone home. But there's no apartments. I mean, should there be a level of apartments and then, cause I don't want us, again, to allow. Too low end of a townhome even, you know what I mean? Cause we've set standards with our ordinance, what we expect those townhomes to be now. So I mean, I, I think there needs to be apartments to, for the, the lower end and then, you know, wait for people to, to move up. But, uh, I don't know how we define those, those markets. That's gonna be market driven, I think, actually. I don't know that we can set anything like that.
May I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
So, we've all been through the home buying process, and so most of the time, the income that you are allowed to have for housing. Like was mentioned, somewhere between thirty percent and thirty-nine percent. And so, so that's usually what it takes to qualify for homeownership. So somewhere in that range, where we can have, you know, that affordability process and that purchasing power of that. Of that range. And he, he's also right that somebody that qualifies for twenty-three hundred dollars, you know, for a house payment. Can pay twenty-eight hundred dollars for a rental, and nobody says a word. And so, you know, they go without somewhere else. Um, I will also say that for a housing study, um, I know that Georgia One has about thirty-five million dollars. That were, was made available for rural areas. HUD has about eighteen million for rural areas. And then I also know that the Association of Realtors, um, we've funded housing studies before. Um, um, there's some across the country that were two hundred to two fifty. And so that collaborative effort can be done as well, so that, just as a suggestion as well. For inventory, for housing, um, other things that have worked across the country, accessory dwelling units on properties. Is one of the most successful and least intrusive, um, for. Yep, mother-in-law suite type, over garage, something like that. Those, uh, uh, work real well. Uh, density bonuses in like an R three, where normally you might get, I don't know, say nine houses per acre. And then you give them density bonuses, you have some conservation land, and you do, you know, twelve an acre or something like that. Those have worked as well. And then, you know, they, um, Georgia state law does allow you to take away some of the fees for those types of houses. If you wanted to consider that. So those are three things that have worked in other places. No, no, come on up.
Come on up.
So I'll say the, um, uh, the, the one thing that other areas seem to have. Um, that, um, that we don't have in Effingham, or at least at this point, uh, in our developable land. Land that's close to water and sewer. Uh, are, uh, what Mr. Rutland said, or they're, they're kind of infill, you know, one hundred acre, you know, two hundred acre, um, at best. Um, tracts of land, uh, whereas, um, you know, we, where some of the surrounding areas. Like New Hampshire and Savannah, uh, you know, will have, you know, forty-three hundred acres, um, you know, that they can master plan. With, you know, uh, putting the, you know, multifamily in the right place, uh, have, um, uh, have commercial. Have, you know, starter homes, have larger tracts of land, uh, where we're not blessed with that ability. Because, um, cause there are, our tracts at this point are a little bit too small, um, you know, to really effectively master plan that. Um, there are, you know, if, um, as we kind of begin to, uh, expand water and sewer capacity, um, north, I'm just saying, I'm not talking very far north. Um, you know, I'm not even talking up to, you know, Springfield, um, you know, that may open up some larger tracts of land where we could, uh, where you can effectively plan a PD. Uh, but, um, uh, you know, I mean, uh, Bryan County does have that ability. With, uh, Rainier Tracts, um, they've got a ten thousand home community that's already been, um, uh, announced. Uh, and, and Savannah does, and, uh, but, um, uh, but we're, you know, we kinda chug along. At, you know, four, as Steve said, about four to five fifty, uh, single-family permits a year. Uh, we just can't, um, uh, and, you know, and some, and this, and places like Port Wentworth. You know, I mean, I think, uh, I heard on the news recently, you know, they've got close to eight thousand or nine thousand, um, uh, committed units. Um, you know, approved, uh, in the zoning process. So, um, uh, so that, you know, uh, obviously is going to be a, a little bit higher density. Just, it's a little more challenging for Effingham. I'll, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Tim, what's our numbers in Belmont Glen? Probably, isn't that about the biggest?
Uh, yeah, if you give me a second, I can get you on that. Um, uh, it's probably, yeah, that's probably the biggest, uh, that we have. Um, when you combine with, uh.
I think it's around a thousand, isn't it? Cause I was thinking that last phase was around three hundred.
Yeah, I was saying, when you can, when you include New Haven, uh, in that, I I think it's close to a thousand. But, you know, I think we had something like, uh, about a three thousand, something that, or three to three thousand and forty-five hundred, um, uh, units that are committed, uh, that the county's kind of obligated for in their rezoning approvals, uh, out there. Um, and normally those would take decades probably to build out, you know, but as Steve says, you know, we're running into situations where a neighborhood will come in and and ask for seventy permits in a month, uh, for one neighborhood. Um, uh, and that was, then now that that's different, that that is a built-to-rent neighborhood. Um, but the market dynamics are changing where I think you'll, the available, uh, approved housing, um, will will start to get, um, built, uh, and filled in at a much quicker pace than, uh, than we originally anticipated. Yeah, but I think it's about a thousand. If you give me a minute, I can give you an answer on that.
In some ways, I see, um, what you said earlier about, um, market driving a lot of this.
Right.
So I think market will drive who builds and how many workforce housing or affordable housing. To me, that's two different things. Do we build, and how many houses do we build for the workforce that may be at, say, one or wherever? Um, so it behooves us to just come up with those areas in my mind that it is acceptable as a county, you know, that best fits the character of our county so that we have all that done, but the market drives what's built and the cost of it.
And I'm sure developers are looking at that, you know, what's the biggest bang for the buck? You know, if the median income's gonna be a hundred to a hundred and fifty, they understand they've gotta build a product that they can go in and build four or five hundred homes and get them sold in a usual amount of time, because that's the biggest demographic, but.
So just thinking out loud, I'm thinking maybe, maybe the study we still need to do, but that may not be as valuable as us intentionally looking at our map, where there's residential sections, where there's industrial, and where would you want the multifamily housing? And where would you want the townhouses? And do you wanna take the R five and make it a percentage so you get more of a PD and say, where would, where would these be, and then let's stick by that? Then let the developers come up with how many you need in these areas. If they wanna build two hundred here, one hundred there, or a thousand here, we've defined the areas that the market defined the need.
If you did that, you can start planning your infrastructure right away.
And you put, and we put infrastructure there for where you want the R three, where you want the PDs, where you want the R fives, and then say, that's where they'll go.
Because otherwise, you're planning after the fact, kind of.
Yeah. I see the wheels turning, what you thinking, Paul?
I was just thinking, you know, they're gonna wanna be near the schools. You see what's happened up here at Effingham County.
Yeah.
School up here, there's all those developers are coming in there. The same thing's fixing to happen on the south end, um.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that discussion can be in the next meeting. But, you know, there's different factors they look at, I think, as to where they try to to place these homes. And a lot of it's market-driven, people are coming up here to, for the schools, but also the the lifestyle, but, I don't know.
And we're, we're still in the process of our land use map.
Yeah, and so Steve is kinda, um, and we've been meeting on this regularly, and we have a meeting with them, what?
Friday.
Friday. Um, uh, with, they're called Inspire now, um, and so just to kind of, um, uh, accumulate all these changes, we have a draft of the of the zoning ordinance, uh, you know, in place. But, you know, we wanna, you know, with the recent changes in, uh, the the development services, you know, we wanted to get our full arms around it. Uh, and so our goal, obviously, is to, is to try and get the, um, ordinance, zoning ordinance to as quickly as we can. So if we have to address some of these concerns in the zo- in the ordinance, um, we can do that in in terms of zoning, as to your point, you know, uh, conditional use, uh, approval for a mixture of townhouses and single families in an R five, uh, we can address that. Um, and then really what is something that guides the rest of the way as to where, you know, your more high-density apartments go, that's probably more related to the future land use map, uh, which we also have drafts of. Uh, you know, where we, um, where we kind of figure out where, uh, where we think the appropriateness of, uh, of density is. And and to the point, you know, generally around commercial areas is probably where you wanna go. And in some cases, those commercial areas may not exist, uh, and, but they're planned.
Well, and you said around schools.
Yeah.
Possibly.
Yeah, and around schools too, is, you know, is is where we seem to, the townhouses seem to wanna go. Um, but I think, you know, if you're talking about apartments, I think generally, um, uh, you know, around commercial areas might be, uh, might be preferable. And we just kinda create those nodes throughout the county, in the municipalities, uh, in the unincorporated area, uh, and try and, you know, do what we can to target, um, uh, you know, to work with developers to, you know, so that they know, uh, you know, this is where the county is looking for, for, you know, that sort of density. And 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 keep in mind, a lot of this is guided by water and sewer, uh, and so, um,
Transportation.
And transportation, yeah. Uh, and so if we don't have those resource, if we don't have that infrastructure in there, um, you know, we, you know, we could start the planning process now, but, you know, it may take us a few years to, um, you know, to get, because you can't do anything high-density without water and sewer, so. Uh, and it's gotta be, you can't put it on a, on an ash road. So you, um, you gotta make it so you can get the cars in and out and get water and sewer in there.
I would love to, uh.
About higher density, that's where we're gonna get the most public pushback. Everybody wanted to live out in the country, you know, about three years ago, and then.
Yeah, we we already get pushback on high density. But I think we've gotta have a way to get good input from the board and from the cities about getting maps to some folks, and before we finish this land use, where should our R three or high, we call it high density, because it may be a different zoning in Guyton than it is in Springfield or Rankin. But where should be the high density? Where should be the mix? And make sure, because I I think that's where we gotta go back to, is redefine those areas where I'm going. And then let the market define the cost of those homes. We might oughta be careful about getting to designing the cost of the homes. I'm not sure that's even a legal thing we could do. So we we just find the areas, you know, and there's a need for it, so we're uniformed, and we have a pattern for land use that's required, and let the market determine whether it's a two-hundred thousand, three-hundred, four-hundred that's built there.
But I venture to say, if if each of us were gonna describe multifamily, we would each to be describing, we have something else in our mind, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, we probably need to, you know, have better, real, real-life examples of what what it is. You know, what are we talking about?
And I'll give you one example, probably the apartments that are on Goshen.
Mm-hmm.
Those answered a real need for our community. They are subsidized, but it looks like it's kept well. There are folks that we all go to church with there that we enjoy and appreciate, but it's very much needed housing. And so we gotta have some more of that type of housing to meet the needs of
Yeah, I know.
Our folks who are coming up in life. Okay, well, I hate to cut us off, it's four fifty-five and I need a quick restroom break. Uh, if if you wanna hang around anybody for commission, it's a shorter meeting tonight. We'll have some more discussion, maybe during the commissioners' time of sharing. I appreciate everybody being here. We're gonna take a five-minute break, come back, and, uh, we'll have our regular Board of Commissioners meeting.